September the eighth, we do have a call, we got six or seven. Shall we stand for any more case than please?
Supervisor Chambers, Mike Palmer, Supervisor Palmer is on the phone.
All right, we got seven to seven on the phone, okay. Shall we pray? Gracious eternal God, we come tonight with thankful and grateful hearts for you and the blessings. We come and ask you to lead us and guide us in where you'd have us to go. Ask you a blessing upon our county, we ask you a blessed citizen of our county. We pray you will bless our nation and bless the leaders of our nation. In your precious name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to, uh, who will be able to work Jennifer tonight?
So move Mr. Chairman. Sorry.
Motion, second, we approve our work agenda for the night. Are there any questions? All in favor? Supervisor Palmer?
Yes.
Seven yes. Is that, what's the guy?
Yeah.
Okay. This one, yes, Jennifer? Moving down our agenda, item E, complaints regarding the Riverstone solar project.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank everybody for coming out tonight. I'm gonna try to make, go through this pretty quick and not waste everybody's time. But tonight's meeting is a continuation of our meeting from early up September, so. Why are we here tonight? The board supervisor directed staff to investigate three items. Those are complaints regarding the Riverstone solar project. Provide an update on what is being done at Birch Lane and to look at the ability to live in a RV slash camper. First thing, I'm gonna start with is the Riverstone complaints. The board supervisor was given a list of complaints. Uh, staff also reached out to citizens to see if there are any more, uh, complaints that should be investigated. Those complaints were, were organized and broken into three basic complaints. Three basic complaints regarding the Riverstone project was the Riverstone project has violated S U P condition number thirteen regarding buffers. The Riverstone project is valid S U P condition number twenty-eight regarding road use restrictions. And that the Riverstone project does not qualify for an extension under Virginia code section fifteen dot two dash two two zero nine dot one colon one. I'm gonna go through those three complaints and tell you what staff has found. First complaint, Riverstone project has violated S U P condition, S U P condition number thirteen regarding buffers. What does condition thirteen say for those that don't know and most people will not know? In summary, condition number thirteen states a fifty-foot buffer of existing vegetation and timber must be retained or maintained along property lines and existing pub, existing public right of way. If there's no vegetation or timber to retain along property lines or the right of way, the applicant will supplement the buffer with new plannings inside that fifty-foot buffer. How is Riverstone violated this condition according to the complaints? It says Apex has placed fences or stormwater controls in the buffer, which is a violation. For that, staff looked at condition number twelve. Um, I included condition twelve there on my presentation, and condition twelve says setbacks to perennial streams, connected wetlands. As an additional erosion and settlement control and stormwater management precaution, a minimum of fifty foot, fifty foot setback shall be maintained from the solely equipment to the edge of all perennial streams and connected wetlands located within the project area. The important line to remember here is what I highlighted in red, transmission lines, poles, project roads, erosion and settlement control, and stormwater management features may be located within the setbacks where necessary. Based on condition number twelve, staff have not found violation regardless of this complaint. Condition twelve of the S U P allows stormwater controls to be in the buffer where necessary. Second complaint regarding buffers was Apex has removed trees and/or vegetation within the buffers, which is a violation. Once again, some of these activities are permitted in condition number twelve of the S U P. One thing to remember here is that the landowner did have some timbering activities occurring about the same time that the S U P was granted. The landowner as a timber company has the right to do their timber on their property. However, that timbering was all with the landowner. Apex has denied orchestrating any timber in buffers after their S U P was issued. So there was timbering activities, some trees got cut, but that was not Apex. That was the landowner getting, they had a sale and they were getting like, most of us do, they would try to cut trees and make timber before they sell the, the, uh, their property. Uh, the third complaint regarding Riverstone was Riverstone project has violated S U P condition number twenty-eight regarding road restrictions. And how is that? They say in the construction traffic continues to use prohibited roads. For that, if you look at condition number twenty-eight, under road use restrictions, the applicant will be restricted from using Payne's Pond Road, Georgia Creek Road, Quail Run Lane, and the portion of Payne's Pond Road from the intersection of Route twenty to the northern boundary of the project area for access to the project area during construction and decommissioning phases of the project. The applicant will be restricted from using Payne Pond, Payne's Pond Road and Quail Run Lane during operations and maintenance phases of the project. Uh, the staff has found with this issue, this issue may arise that some construction workers are not local and are following their GPS. I'm sure their GPS is taking them to the most, the quickest route or the, when they're coming from. Some of these workers, I'm sure, are not from local. They're from out of state maybe or somewhere within the state of Virginia. So what staff has done and will continue to do, staff has gotten those complaints from constituents and they will continue to forward all those road complaints to Apex. Apex has placed road construction signage on the mentioned roads and is committed to further notify contractors of the proposed routes. As of this past Friday, when we went through there, there was still no construction traffic signs that were still standing on Payne's Pond Road. The last complaint regarding the Riverstone project is the Riverstone project does not qualify for an extension under the Virginia code section fifteen dot two dash two two zero nine dot one colon one. This issue has come up before the board before. The county attorney has issued an opinion that this project does qualify for an extension under the code and no further board action is necessary. Also Apex stands firm behind their interpretation of the code, which grants the project an extension. So there's no required action for the board supervisors. That wraps up my summary for the Riverstone project. Any questions or comments from the board?
Any board member having any comments or questions?
I just have one. There's some pictures that I was sent where they're turning out to Payne's Pond Road going towards six fifty. Like it was, uh, being tractor in the road and dirty and. Just as a common courtesy for the community, could y'all put a wash station or something if your trucks are muddy before they come here? Think that would be. Travel in a little further or something, whatever.
Any other board members? Moving down to item after and broke off.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on our agenda tonight is Birch Lane. Uh, the complaint the board supervisor received is what has been done at Birch Lane. Uh, I'll try to give you like a little timeline of what we've done as staff and what has happened in Birch Lane. The zoning administrator received calls regarding complaints back in twenty twenty-three. Our enforcement, our enforcement officer, Mr. Hill, went to the site to visit the site. Mrs. Emerson researched the issues and found many vehicles, but noted four vehicles that are considered inoperable. According to our zoning ordinance, four inoperable vehicles are allowed, and we have interpreted the word inoperable vehicle as a vehicle that will start. The zoning ordinance does not specify how many operable vehicles be, can be on the property. Also, when we've gotten the complaints, we've sent multiple agencies out there to investigate. Uh, the health department was made a visit to the property to investigate a complaint that sewage was not being properly disposed back in twenty twenty-three. After their investigation, the health department found no violations. We also had animal control visited the site and also found no violations in twenty twenty-three. The sheriff's office has also been on the site, and I don't know the details of what they found, but the sheriff's office has also visited that site when we got complaints. We recently received another complaint, which is in twenty twenty-five. Ms. Emerson reached out to the occupant and was told that she was not allowed to be on the property and trespassing charges will be filed if she attempted to do so. The next step would be to get an administrative warrant, that is, that we have a strong belief that there's a violation occurring. So once again, we've sent, when we gotten complaints, we've sent everybody, anybody that we know that deals with those complaints, because of the law enforcement, animal control, and the health department. Staff has invested, invested time and resource to investigate the issues, but we're not finding any ordinance violations. It's also important to note the county does not have a clean yard ordinance. Things may look bad or be inappropriate, but that doesn't mean it's a violation of the county ordinance, and that's what we got enforced, wasn't a violation of the ordinance. Any questions regarding staff regarding Birch Lane?
It look like it's me again, huh? But, uh, I've seen some of the stuff myself call, and I think it's a sheriff's department issue. I came to go to the firehouse the other Friday night to getting ready for the barbecue and they was hurt down on the road on four wheelers and everything else hurt on the road. I think that the sheriff's department needs to have more of a presence in the area. I myself called the health department. Had him to go back out again. Tells me he didn't find any violations. He said he did issue a summons, but. I talked to him, they hadn't received it yet. I don't know what the summons was for. Supposed to email it to me. I haven't received it yet.
You know who that was, Mr. Davis? That Dante?
Yes.
I understand that, you know, what do you say when you, you present a presentation like this and have four different agencies to go down to check something out, us being one of them, the county? Um, it just concerns me that these are real reputable people. One gentleman I talk to on a weekly basis, one of the most outstanding people I know with credibility. I don't, it just concerns me how this gentleman could make this up and what reason would he have to come up with this to cause a complaint every day? Um, but I guess if, if this is the way it's been checked out and it's the way it is, it is, and I understand that you have to be very careful with this clean ordinance because then what are you gonna do with every house if it's a grass hadn't been cut or something, so you gotta be, uh, here we are fighting against ordinances and getting ready to put an ordinance in, so I, I'd be hesitant to do something like that. But, uh, it is very concerning when you have reputable conversations with people that you've dealt with all your life. And, uh, I don't feel like it's misleading whatsoever by those people.
I agree upon that. I've been knowing most of those folks on that road all my life. They're upstanding citizens and they wouldn't be complaining if it wasn't a problem, so. That's why I think we need more of a law enforcement presence around there. I don't understand that one guy, they spent all this money to go get him and then he's back there on the street in three or four days. SWAT teams and everything else come in to get him and then he's back down now a week later. That's just me.
Any other board member, any comments?
Well, I think a lot of the neighbors have seen a lot of trouble down there and seen things happening. Any porn stuff hurt them vehicles and nobody over here has seen it. Nobody over here is understanding, so. Makes it, I don't know if somebody called down there before they go see him or what, and then they get a chance to hide the stuff.
So only vehicle part of it, just for my clarification, I understand about the vehicles. I understand about the four inoperable vehicles. But if a guy, say myself, had ten vehicles on there and I wasn't paying personal property tax on them, I didn't have them registered with the county, is that legal? I, I, so you can still have them on your property and not pay personal property tax on them, is that true?
I'm the owner of Birch Lane, if you do a teeth.
I don't see any need to speak to you, sir. I was just asking a question about the county ordinance, about the number of vehicles that you can add.
Anything above fours are trouble. I don't think it got above four.
Vehicles that are inoperable.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I also have a gentleman that is supposed to.
Understand.
Far is warning me, no. Walk them around my house and show them what's inoperable, what's going on, and they find no violations.
My question was to the county administrator, not just on your, your piece of property, sir, but my question was just how many vehicles can you have without paying personal property tax on them?
I pay personal property tax on ten vehicles.
Okay.
I have ten vehicles.
Thank you.
Now let's move on down to, uh, item G, the ability to live in a camp in RV, what's called?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not allow for temporary use of campers. Based on different circumstances that could occur for each case, staff doesn't feel like the blanket or one size fits all is gonna work for changing our ordinance to incorporate all these, uh, what to do with campers, uh, temporary campers. Our staff is recommending sending this to our issue to our zoning committee to come up with a satisfactory solution. That zoning committee members are Supervisor Gillum, Supervisor Palmer, planning commission, planning commissioner member Johnny Vicford, and planning commissioner Joyce Gooden. The county administrator, myself, county attorney, and zoning administrator. Possible path forward, the zoning committee will make a recommendation to the planning commission, the planning commission, the planning commission will then approve and make changes in a hold of public hearing. The planning commission will then send amendments to the board supervisors at the public hearing. Um, if you all want to do that, I can take a consensus of the board to get that committee up and going and get something started pretty quickly for you.
What's the pledge of the board?
There's nothing we can do to help this man out right now, Carl. I mean, Chairman, I'll just. To me, that's gonna put it down, kick it down the road another couple of months, right?
When are you coming for the planning commission, uh, next month?
He will have a public hearing, um, October twenty-seventh, if there's enough information. Or to November and a potential public hearing in December with the board.
I could put it to December. So what is, uh? Do you still want to talk about bringing the committee back, um, Carl?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Bringing the committee back to look at the ordinance?
Yes, if you guys want to do that, yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Palmer.
How long has the occupant been waiting? Since he applied, did he, did he apply for a campground permit? Is that what he was told?
Yes. Yes.
So how long? So how far that, how far down the road has he, has he gone in this process?
I think Ms. Emerson said he's gonna have his introduction in October to the planning commission?
Yes, the conversations for this process started at the end of June and July. The application was received to be on the agenda for the September board meeting, uh, for the planning commission, excuse me, and that was held last Monday. They moved it forward to a public hearing for October.
So his permit process is already gone before the planning commission, is that what she's saying?
Yes, sir.
So wouldn't the fastest route to try to help this man be, when it comes to us and at our next scheduled board meeting?
What was that, what was that question, Mr. Palmer?
What was that question, Mr. Palmer?
I guess.
I said, yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't the fastest action to help this gentleman be to let it go ahead and come to the board? What, isn't it scheduled to come to the board for a public hearing, uh, upcoming meeting?
No, sir. It's the planning commission public hearing. It'll be a recommendation to the board of supervisors in November and a potential public hearing in December for the board supervisors.
Okay, so it just went through the last planning commission meeting. I'm just trying to make sure I'm straight.
Yes, sir.
Introduced last Monday to the planning commission.
But the bottom line is we wanna add it so he can have a RV to live there a little while to build the house, and soon as he builds the house, he can get it out. To me, that's what I thought we was talking about doing.
Yes, sir, and that's why we think that zoning commission will be your best bet, because we're gonna have different scenarios that come up that we need to get us nice and tight, strong ordinance that.
I guess what Mr. Palmer is trying to say, Mike, is this what you're trying to say? You're trying to figure out how many months? The gentleman told us he was spending nine hundred dollars a month. Is that correct, sir? Nine hundred dollars a month at a campground renting? So if we in October, we in October, November, December, if we do nine times three before it got through the board, he'd be close to three thousand dollars in expenditures from renting. Uh, again, is that, is that what you're trying to get at, Mike?
Yeah, that's my concern.
Okay.
We're, 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 uh. I don't know. I mean, whatever the board's recommendation is, I guess I'll have to go with it.
Oh, I mean, can we rock, go ahead and just recommend, change it, saying that we can put that down?
Right now it would be a violation of your ordinance.
Hey, let me, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, if he put this camper trailer down as a mobile home and, and, and sets it up as a mobile home, is that permissible?
That would be a violation to the zoning ordinance and to the building code of Virginia. Because a RV is not, um, does not have a HUD certificate on it as a mobile home, single Y, double Y, triple Y.
I thought it'd be the same thing as a mobile home if you set it up.
No, sir. Supervisor Bryant and Tommy Rantzen, the building inspector, is not here to address the violations to the building code, but it would be. And we're happy to bring him to the next meeting if you'd like to speak with him too.
That's my question.
That's you gonna make a new rule changes?
Well, I get, just in my opinion, I guess that looks like. I know it seems like it's, it's consensus of the board for the most part that we want to try to help this gentleman. And. Just like some of these other things where people have had complaints and we send somebody out and then there's no complaint, you know, that, everything seems to be compliant. You know, they're mad at us, but if. You know, they're mad at us, but if, you know, if you send the right people out and nothing's wrong, there's nothing you can do. And I, I'm, I guess we're looking for a way to say, you know, we know what the ordinance is. We know what the ordinance says, and we know most of the time it seems like we, we're pretty sure what a violation is. Uh, but what can we do to help this gentleman with his unique problem? That's, you know, and, and I don't think we're being stubborn and asking different questions, but we're just trying to see what can we do to help him. But yet we can't put other things in jeopardy at the same time. Does it, does that make sense? Probably not. I don't know. Uh, you know, we can't put
Well.
everything in jeopardy, but we wanna try to help this man in his unique circumstance.
Building permit, he's gonna build a house.
He's gonna build a house.
Is it something we could do to give him something temporary for three months until he gets through the thing? I mean, the board speaking tonight, we're gonna pass it. I mean,
And make a law for it, yeah.
I, I'm just trying to help the man out.
But that's what this commission is, would be tasked with is coming up with an ordinance that would fit these circumstances, but yet not put the other things in jeopardy.
Right.
And
We could put some verbiage in it. I mean, I'm not on that committee, but
No, I'm not either.
Maybe some verbiage that if they bought a building permit and all, we can go from there. Yes, ma'am. You'll have to have thirty days notice to have a public hearing to change it, right?
If you could change the ordinance, I think. That's what I call.
That's right, yes, sir. Got the public.
But we can't just up and tonight change an ordinance.
That's right, that's right. You can't.
That's the thing that's got you, you know. You can't, we can't just come up and change an ordinance. It has to be due process, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent.
Have to have a public hearing so the public's allowed to comment.
Due process is involved and understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion that we, that we go with having the committee meet? We discuss it, we present it to the planning commission, and go forward as we had already said?
A second.
Oh, say, say the motion again, uh, Mr. Palmer? Put a second on that.
That we go ahead and, and assemble the committee to discuss this issue, and we present our findings or our plans or changes to the planning commission before their next stated meeting.
All right. We've got a motion and second. Uh, any question on the motion? All in favor?
Says down the bottom, says voted.
What do we have?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, what was your vote on that?
Yeah, it's Mike's.
Mike, Mike voted yes.
Got seven yes?
There you go. I ain't got seven yes.
Got seven yes now. Okay, thank you. All right, other, other board members? Other board members?
Mr. Chairman, I got something real quick.
Yes, sir.
I've been over to hospital all day with a young man from my community. Fifteen years old with a brain tumor. Been in a nine-hour surgery. I've been over there since five fifteen this morning. Came through the surgery great. He's a young man that's in my boys' group at church, and he's been there. I've had him since he was six years old. He took a hit at football practice a month ago and got his third concussion in twelve months. So the doctor ordered him to get an MRI, and that's when they found he was born with this tumor. They wanted to figure why he kept getting concussions.
Right.
Well, I talked to the doctor before I left the hospital. It was not cancer. They went through his nose and all, and they extracted most of the tumor. They think they got it all, but he's gonna have to do three radiation treatments to make sure that this tumor doesn't come back. Young man's name is C J Elliott. Y'all just please be praying for this young man that everything goes well.
Thank you.
Thank you for making us aware of that.
Any other matters in the board member? Now we adjourn the meeting.